Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I am the official of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Please take your seats. There was an executive session held prior to tonight's meeting to discuss real property. A roll call, please.
Brosius?
Here.
Reitner?
Here.
Barnhart?
Here.
Hartzino? Eisner?
Is there any public comment on agenda items at this time? Any public comment? Please state your name, sir.
I'm Patrick. I was asked to come by the chairman of the board of commissioners and get a question about an item on their agenda. The government's cooperation between the city and the county regarding the Salatex lot, are you able to shed some light on it, just to answer some questions?
More so, this isn't Q and A, it's just public comments. So we're just saying you're asking for more details. When we get to that item, we can discuss something about it. For other than that point, say it's not Q and A, so we'll get to that, we can. That is then, sir? All right. Please state your name, sir.
My name is Vinnie Clausy. I'm a former criminal county commissioner. I served eight years in the board. And I'd like to ask, first of all, I want to talk, I want to know what's going on with Salatex property. And you guys, you can make no comment. I have some detail to share with Councilman, uh, Mr. Eisner. You remember when he was going to build the prison, sir? You recall, you guys was in line meeting in the commissioner's office. The Salatex was ready to build, we have the plans ready to go, we would buy, we'd purchase a steel, ready to build. And Mr. Chigatano and Clayborne has been told in the last six years, lying, 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 and they're saying that Salatex was contaminated. Mr. Heitz, you know it was not contaminated.
True.
Correct?
We have some documentation, so, sir, am I correct?
Yeah, we have documentation.
Why, why did the county commission, that means, why they move the prison from Sunbury to, uh, Cortangia? And they said because the property was contaminated. When you people, you people, it was every meeting we had, me, with the council people, Mr. Heitz, you was there, everyone of them. You know, the Salatex was not contaminated.
I didn't say it was.
It was, and it is.
I'm agreeing with you.
You agree with me it's not contaminated?
Yes.
Okay, you're gonna call him the right detective, Salatex was not contaminated. You gotta go and crack.
Back up, Bill. It was contamination here, but it was half, capped. Mr. Clausy and his...
I'm a construction guy, I know, I know.
They got the phase two, they got the phase two, and they're all...
We would spot, we would spot the poor, one full top soil on top, they got rid of the contamination. And the parking lot, we built the parking lot, it's no more contaminated.
Right.
So, what happened? Mr. Chigatano and Mr. Rick Shark, they decided to bring the prison to Cortangia. And I want everybody to know, I want all the press to know, why? Because the chief clerk, in the county government, he was, uh, the brother was the CEO for the company. And for the record, I want to tell, and I want the press to understand. Okay, when the company owned that property before, Alan Swolina donated 150 acres for free, county clerk, they give for free, to the, uh, northwest, what do they call that?
Mr. Claus, I don't mean to interrupt you, but we want to keep it to the Salatex property you were referring to.
Whoa, 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 that's a farce, officer.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so you're gonna let me go?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
What was that company was there before? Okay, for the northwestern economy. Northwestern economy, Alan Swolina donated 150 acres for free. What happened? Mr. Chigatano, Mr. Clayborne, he purchased the land for six and a half million dollars. How can we give a piece of property free and then we buy back for six and a half million? That is a corrupt business. Uh, we would like to know a little more detail, why you guys rush into this judgment tonight, okay? I think you guys should wait for new administration, no matter who's the new administration is next year, and let's make sure that the deal is good for everybody, for you guys and for the county. I'm not against you guys to purchase the land, okay? But we want to know...
We're not purchasing the land, Mr. Clausy. Well, it's a partnership, the county's gonna remain ownership of the land.
Oh, the county's gonna remain?
Absolutely, it's gonna be a working partnership.
It's a fifty-fifty deal.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you're gonna get it for nothing?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. But remember, you told me a couple weeks ago, you could give it to us anyhow. Remember that conversation?
I said to you guys, if I come to the county commission, we will work a deal out.
Well, let's back up here, let's stay with the Salatex.
Salatex, right?
Back when your administration was there?
Yeah.
Everything was set to build the prison there.
Correct.
There's twenty-two acres, the county got twenty, twelve acres, and the city got ten acres of the front.
Correct, correct.
That was a partnership deal between the city and the, and the county at that time.
Correct.
Okay. And you did a lot of mediation work on soils, you had, uh, I forget the name of the company.
I had the plans ready to build, I have it in my home.
Okay. The point is, we've worked together then, that's fifteen years ago, roughly, am I correct?
Yes.
You didn't even wait long enough. You wait to wait another fifteen years or wait for you to get in the office?
It's not me, it's not me, no matter who gets in the office, I say you guys should give an opportunity for a new administration to work this deal out with it. I don't think that a new administration comes in, okay, issue, you guys should cut a deal right away tonight, because it's an election year, that's not right.
We're not cutting a deal. We were putting something on the table which we passed to the county to review, they had to make the final decision. If they voted down, the deal's over.
Mr. Eisner, you know you already cut a deal with, with Chigatano. You know that, and I know that.
Well, didn't we cut a deal fifteen years ago?
It was not fifteen years.
Two thousand fifteen.
Two thousand fifteen?
But that was fact, the public knew everything what was going on. Today, the public don't know nothing what's going on.
We've been working...
You guys rushing to judgment.
Well, that's in your eyes.
In mine, yes.
Okay. But the soils are good to build, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay.
The soils good to build. And you gotta go on the record tonight and say that Mr. Chigatano and Clayborne, it was wrong to say that the property was contaminated.
It's only good for industry and for residency.
We have tapes all over the...
Well, you have tapes.
All right, so Mr. Clausy, um, anything else you'd like to make comment on to Mr. Eisner? We can...
Okay, I'd like to make a comment. I believe you guys should table this tonight and then wait for the new administration or council people, or county commissions people, to make a study and make sure this deal is better for both of us, county and the city. And that's what I'm asking you, our officiers, you take on this issue.
Years ago, we didn't have a study done when that deal was made. Not rather, no, did we have a study done? No.
Okay, anything else, Mr. Clausy, for a comment?
I like, one more time, I'm gonna say, I believe for the best interest of the citizens in Sunbury and the best interest of the county citizen, this, this proposal tonight, you should be tabled to get more detail before the House. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Clausy. Any other public comment at this time?
Sorry, Rosenkranz. So, I, to the sentiment, Mr. Clausy, I would really like tonight for you to go back and start at the beginning, because there's a lot that's happened with this since 2021. And grant money and the 1.5 and the $500,000 remaining balance, January, Mayor Brosius asked for a work session, I'm not sure if that happened February 20th, on the agenda and in the minutes, that a rat pee was applied again for Salatex. So I'd really like to understand, I'd really like to know this whole process since 2021, and then there was another grant. So that's kind of me, the original grant wasn't used properly, like it wasn't used in time or what happened, and there was very little information in, on the minutes of that meeting about the rat pee. So I really, I think we need to understand all of this, because there's not transparency and accountability here. So you really need to, let's, let's talk about the contamination. There was 145 studies, five contaminants that exceeded the Act Two residential use standards September 19, 2011, non-residential use. So that's what's on that property right now. So yes, I'm gonna put that top layer on there, it can be...
Prison is residential.
But I'd really like to go back in 2021 and really understand all the grants that were applied for, what happened from 2021 until now, now there's another rat pee on the thing, I'd like to understand that. And also the monies that were spent on, because there were studies done for the red light up there on Sunset Hana. And the other thing I, I'm really encouraging to not be really put out there is the fact that it's this heartening fear that it's not gonna cost the taxpayers anything, okay? That I guarantee, and I just really want to understand why the city of Sunbury was really getting involved with this property. And even looking back on, they said, oh, we have six people that are interested or whatever, and here we are in 2023, and those six people aren't anywhere to defend. Okay, so I'd really like to have a timeline, and I agree, I think you need to slow down, I think you need to honor Mayor Brosius's request to do a, um, a work session, and let's really get all of this transparent to the taxpayers, because I'm not real comfortable with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Please state your name, sir.
I don't know, uh, some history about that property up there. That building was constructed by a converting diwork factory. And while they were there, old climbers had thought about a pond that was on the property. Apparently, they dumped some of their waste into that pond, and they could recall seeing gerbering or whatever, murky water. So Moran comes along, and I guess, the weather come along with some guy. Moran comes along with sixty of dirt on top of it, so the climbers bring it, all they have to do is get down sixty, will never get down to that pit that had all the junk in it. That's the problem, I think.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment at this time? Okay, thank you. Uh, moving on, approval of minutes and reports, minutes for April 10th, 24th, for fire department, police department, treasurer, code office, health department, shade tree, and planning commission, go have a second.
Reitner?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Eisner? Brosius?
Yes. Um, oath of office for Riley Bremigin, uh, chief.
Riley, you want to come up here? Can I have him on with him up? So what we're gonna do now is, uh, just give you a little history on Riley. Riley's been with us since September, part-time, part-time, full-time, we'll say. Riley comes from a stock of police family. His dad, Tim, was started at the ranks here as patrol, worked his way up to sergeant and was the chief here at one time. His uncle is currently our sergeant in the police department. Sunbury has a way of getting stock of Browns, Starks, and now Bremigin. So, um, we already have a jumpstart on Riley. We are privileged and pleased to have him as another piece of our puzzle to the building of our department. So I'm gonna have the mayor, um, in his oath of office, sorry, oath of office, and his dad is gonna pin his badge on him.
Please raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name, Ira R. Bremigin. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, defend, and constitute the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support, defend, and obey the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
I will enforce the laws of, of the city of Sunbury.
I will enforce the laws of the city of Sunbury.
And I also will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And I will also discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
I do further swear.
I do further swear.
That I will uphold.
That I will uphold.
Obey and enforce the law without any consideration of a person's race.
Obey and enforce the law without any consideration of a person's race.
Color, sex, religious creed.
Color, race, religion, or creed.
Sexual orientation, age.
Sexual orientation or age.
Handicap or disability.
Handicap or disability.
Congratulations.
So anybody who needs to know, this brings our department up to full-time, including myself, ten officers. The other, like I said, it's another building block of what we're trying to accomplish here at the city to keep the citizens of Sunbury safe, secure and safe. So, um, just a pleasure to have them.
Very nice.
You'll see them out in the streets all, thank you.
And then we have a proclamation for National Gun Violence Awareness Day. The proclamation declares the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the city of Sunbury in Reformland County. And proclaiming this, we honor and remember all victims and survivors to gun violence that, that declared in the community and country. We must do more to reduce the ultimate gun, uh, violence. Whereas every day in America, more than 200 individuals are shot, wounded, and more than 110 are killed due to gun violence. Americans are 26 more times likely to die of gun homicide than people in high-income counties. Whereas in Pennsylvania, there are an average of 1,600 deaths every year with a rate of 12.5 deaths per 1,000 people, by having this the third highest rate of gun deaths in the U.S. Whereas gun homicides, assaults, and contractions are more densely populated areas with more than half the firearm-related gun deaths in the nation's occurring 127 cities. Communities across the nation, including Sunbury, are working hard to end this senseless violence with evidence-based solutions. Whereas gun violence prevention is more than ever in COVID pandemic situations, gun violence is more than two years of increasing, increasing calls homicide, domestic dispute, and more for in other cities. Whereas mayors and law enforcement officers know that communities are best and familiarized with local criminal activity and how to address it are best positioned to understand how their citizens, to make them safer, and declare protecting public safety and these communities that we serve. Whereas anyone can join the campaign by pledging orange on June 3rd, the first Friday in 2023, to help raise awareness about gun violence and honor the victims that have been lost to gun violence. Now therefore, I, Josh Brosius, mayor of the city of Sunbury, with the support of the city council and citizens of Sunbury, do hereby proclaim the first Friday in June, June 3rd, 2020... Sorry, June 2nd, 2023, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the city of Sunbury, by proclaiming I encourage all citizens to support their local community efforts to educate one another, but by putting action into preventing these tragic events of gun violence and honor all those victims. Thank you.
Unfinished business, Councilman Eisner?
Yes.
Back to the warehouse, we just have to figure out going back and forth. Bill, where do we stand there? To me, my understanding was the last meeting, there was some question as to the outstanding taxes doing on him, although it was my understanding it had been resolved. I don't know that for sure. Do you know, do you, do you tell me if that whole is all?
Actually, the question was whether or not the value of the property had been used as, um, matching funds or a rat pee. And the answer, and that was answered, and it was not. So the valuation was based on the Albright building itself, it did not include the 41 chess.
Any better?
And the taxes are paid, yes.
Okay, and then I'll make a motion to, uh, make it back.
Second.
Reitner?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Eisner? Brosius?
Yes. Uh, new business, uh, the first reading of bill 2023-02, the, for the firework display. About a month ago, there were two options on the table, speaking with the chief and the solicitor, we wanted the option that allowed permitting for the use of firework displays. Uh, any questions upon that? I mean, uh, do we want to do a fee or we want to waive that fee, or how do we, what do you suggest?
I mean, here's the issue, if, the idea of this is to make people responsible in their use of fireworks. I think you almost have to charge some fee, or you're not meeting the idea of the legislature that is forcing us to pass these things, one or the other. Therefore, I think probably legally, we have to set some kind of a fee, it doesn't have to be a high fee, but a legal fee.
Does anyone have any suggestions, or they think a reasonable fee may be? I know Councilman Eisner, you've been around a lot, a lot with fireworks and displays for the celebration.
I see fifty dollars, so, I agree, fifty dollars, seventy-five.
All right, so with the fee of fifty dollars, with, uh, with the first reading of the bill, any question, any issues with that? All right, so I'll make the motion with the fifty-dollar fee, do I have a second?
Second. Barnhart?
Yes.
Eisner? Brosius?
Yes.
Reitner?
Yes.
Uh, 911 Rapid Response Proposal, I'm just gonna try to sort of achieve this, speak briefly about it.
Yeah, so we've, um, we have an F-150, and we're getting a deck, deck box for it. Funds being paid out of no taxpayer money, it's all donated money, uh, aside accounts of the police department uses for tools and equipment, and I have plenty of money in there to use that for. You guys all have a proposal in your package, it's a total star price, so it's, it'll go into the F-150, it's equipped with equipment and stuff in it for, uh, crime scenes and so.
And that's for the cost of, uh, 1,350. So any questions on anyone? All right, so I make the motion, uh, to purchase the 911 Rapid Response Proposal for amount of 1,350, do I have a second?
I'm sorry.
Eisner? Brosius?
Yes.
Reitner?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Uh, so I'm, we'll say a couple months, you know, we talked about doing a city hall remodel, since then, council, and Eisner, myself, has met with Rocky Barrett, he had this, give, do a walkthrough on the estimated cost of proposal for the blueprints in the folder. I think last week, he sent back a cost of 4,000, the details are in your folder there. Go ahead.
Question, John asked me later, what we were gonna be doing, one, I would suggest you get together before next council, you're, with all the council yourself, and do a walkthrough.
Yes, and I know some of the ideas Councilman Bremigin, you suggested before, we gave him them suggestions, but obviously, this is, you know, next time will be the full specs of whatever we want to do, we think, but we can set something up and go from there. Any questions, Rick?
Yeah, I, I, uh, I guess it's 5.1.1, 5.1.1, SBA Architectural Suite for feasibility and schematic design. Right now, we have no idea what the schematic design is.
Yeah, that, that's what we'll be, that's what he'll be creating for that cost.
I guess my assumption, from talking to different departments, some, some people want to move, get out of the locations.
Who wants to move, I didn't...
Well, like, the code office is looking at some changes.
Well, yeah, now I'll go back to like what John was talking about, you know, I wouldn't say moving, but just, I think reconstruction of walls here and there, so on and so forth.
I just wonder how he came up with a fee without knowing what they were...
Well, we, when we walked through a gym, we said, all right, here's some ideas, what we're looking for, and that's how, except we didn't have anything set in stone, just from, you know, conversations with Jeff and John and Kevin and you and the ladies back in up front, so... All right, any, any other questions? All right, so I'll make the motion to accept this proposal, do I have a second?
This is just a proposal?
Yeah, to do the, the plans and the schematics and the blueprints and the...
My question is, like, we were talking about, and, uh, the information I think, we're talking about moving mayor's office, that's not where the treasurer's office is.
No, 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 no. It's just gonna, that front office is just gonna be redesigned differently, like, from my understanding, we're staying up front, a break room in the middle, the treasurer's department staying where it's at, the conference room back there is getting redone, and the code office is same thing, just getting redone in there to be more safe for the employees in there with barriers between the employees and the public.
I would rather us wait for the next meeting to vote on this. I mean, I, until we did the walkthrough and made sure that we know what we're doing, where we're going, what's, what we've done, that's my opinion.
Well, I said, I, I mean, this is just to prove, so we can go, like I said, get, bring the architect in to do those plans.
Yeah, but if we, my guess is, what would matter for, in two weeks after we walk through, and tell them exactly what we're looking at then?
I mean, I mean, I don't have an issue doing that, it's just, that's fine, so, okay.
And I, I'm just saying, because right now, we don't know what we're doing. Where, that's just an assumption, and somebody's part here was put ahead.
Okay, we can, we can table it to next meeting then. All right, so I'll...
I mean, I'm not, you don't understand where I'm coming from.
Yeah, I understand. So we, we can just table it, that's fine.
When I take one of this, under 4,000, it's a copy on the high end.
Yeah.
And depending what we do, it'd be less, I don't want to exceed that.
No, that's why I said, I mean, for this, for this price, I think was unfair, I mean, very fair.
If that's, if that's the case, that it's not going to exceed that, then what we're doing, then I can agree.
Yeah, I'm not saying that, from, yeah, so... All right, so I'll just table it, and we, between now and next council meeting, we'll get together, say what needs to be done, X, Y, and Z, and do that. So I'll make a motion to table it, do I have a second?
Second. Barnhart?
Yes.
Eisner? Brosius?
Yes.
Reitner? Yes.
Councilman Barnhart, stadium approval.
Well, before I make a motion, Todd Smith, Mr. Smith, would you mind if I explain, uh, the, uh, the project plan and also the MOU?
Yes, um, thank you. The plan for the stadium is to dig the natural grass field and convert it to synthetic turf. Rebuild the existing track, there's an addition that will be on, this is the existing field house, will be an addition put on the field house. This is the existing concession building, and that remains there. The building and the ticket booths out front will be acknowledged and be constructed to restroom the concession building and the ticket booths. This is an open-air podium, somewhere they set up for the commercial club or something. And then this building, or the existing concession building, that, that building will be removed also, and that will be a storied building with three bays, most likely storage for three different sports. But that's, we're gonna be using it. So we'll have new long jump, triple jump runways and jump pits, we're gonna rebuild the existing oval, and then the perimeter fencing will be replaced. Our water service currently, there's two water services now, we're going to eliminate one of them, and about three, another one. The one up here on Old Street will be upgraded, and it will come in and serve, serve the stadium. And sanitary sewer that's currently serving, uh, field house, it can be extended and connected onto the new, new mission.
Like, is there any more concession stand now? Yes. Weren't they, those two concession stands were used as front runners for...
Todd, there's two.
There's two. There's two concession fields. Existing one here, or...
Okay.
And then in this building, there will be...
Quick question, let me, because I know firsthand, obviously, that's the interior of the stadium. I know that we talked tomorrow about the Javon runway, does that need to come back at a later date, because that's not in those plans right now?
That's being discussed.
I, no, I get, I understand that, but does that need to come back again for a later, or like, if we pass that here tonight, will that be included in that, if it decides to go forward with that?
I think so.
Okay.
If you would include it now, I mean, they're still, the school district is still discussing whether or not, they're, they're trying to find a place where it fits on the side.
We, we found one today, so just let you know.
Okay, good deal.
It'll be finished by September 24th.
Uh, and then the MOU is a requirement of the land development approval process, it's a separate document, uh, and it's an agreement between the school district and the city, whereas the school district is guaranteeing to do the public improvements, uh, that are deemed public, such as sewer, water, and, and, and public health, safety, and welfare of the public. And if they, they don't complete it as planned, then this agreement gives the, the city the opportunity to cash in the, the surety bonds and have the, to get it on the ground.
This, this passes, when is the plan starting, or what?
June 1st. May 31st is graduation, and from that day on, the stadium will be closed, and we'll start mobilization, and then start the motion.
Do you have an estimated completion date, in an ideal world?
Well, in an ideal world, this is a very, uh, escalated timeframe, we're in August, correct?
The completion of everything.
Well, not the buildings, just contract in the field, so that we can have, and have that for use while they are doing building.
Any other questions, anyone?
Did you have any, you had?
No, I'm good, thanks.
Go ahead, go ahead, John.
All right. I can make a motion to accept the Shipperton School District Stadium project, and, to prove that, as just explained.
Second.
Reitner?
Yes. Yes.
Bornheart?
Yes.
Ice Thir?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, road closures, uh, for twenty twenty-three. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm making a motion to accept the MOU between the city and the Shikatano School District Development Agreement.
Second.
Bornheart?
Yes.
Ice Thir, Roches?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, now road closures for twenty twenty-three. Uh, so some road closures, uh, some race celebration, some race celebration July. Uh, Light Fest, uh, Christmas in July, July twenty-ninth. Uh, Sumberry Revitalization Festival, August eighteenth and nineteenth. Sumberry Fire Police Halloween Parade, October nineteenth. Sumberry Fire Department Memorial Service on October fifteenth, and Sumberries New Year's, New Year, yeah, gotcha. New Year's Eve Celebration on December thirty-first and January first. Do I have a second for all those road closures?
I'm sorry.
Ice Thir?
Yes.
Roches?
Yes.
Rightner?
Yes.
Bornheart?
Yes.
Uh, on the back, inter, intergovernmental cooperation agreement between city and county, Councilman Ice Thir.
Yes, as we discussed here earlier, there's a couple of reasons I want to clarify. First of all, everyone's worried about the parcel, what we're gonna build with parcel and the contamination. I think we addressed a lot of that this evening, Mr. Klosi, going back to the year you were in office, the site was clean. Second of all, the other evening, we had a meeting here with the construction of Susquehanna Avenue, Mr. Mary, you were here, and John, and you were all with the, the position. And Susquehanna Avenue is gonna be totally rebuilt to the point where stormwater management and widening Susquehanna Avenue. At that meeting, we discussed the intersection on the front and Susquehanna Avenue. Of course, the public was here that evening, they were thrilled about it, because that's a dead intersection, Ford Justice will be in section also. That is more the key of this whole project, because without the entrance to the parcel, parcel really, that's one reason it hasn't been developed. You can't get out of it, off the front street or anywhere. On the backside, you can, but not on developing the parcel itself. That said, like I said, everyone's worried about the parcel and the contaminants. I just want to clarify a couple of things here also. On the rack P, I have no idea, Vic, if you can come up with rack P, this one, this one, it's only ever been one, it's still there, it's never been set.
I, I went on based on your agenda minutes, that said you applied for another one for Cellotex, that's why I'm asking for clarification on that.
Extensions.
Extension.
So you only have six months? First, uh, originally you have a year, I believe it was a year. And then you have to apply for extension every six months, otherwise you lose that funding. So you apply for the extension of the rack P, and so you used up the funding, basically.
So, well, you still didn't ask for clarification, you want, you know?
I understand.
Why, you might have needed any further, but that's what I'm asking.
No, I understand.
I'm asking for a full story of the whole process.
Well, you just stick with me, I'll try to explain things to you. Also, the million and a half, that was in the original agreement in the past, it's no longer on the table. As it stands in this agreement we have here in front of us this evening, the city pays nothing.
So the county government give you the Cellotex to create, right?
We're getting fifty percent, it's a partnership. Okay, just basically like you did before, when you were in office, okay? That said, back to, uh-
My question to you, sir, was, you better clarify with the commissioner, because they intake, okay, say the Cellotex is contaminated.
Nobody else gets to win.
You cannot deny that. You can deny it all you want, but it's intake.
Okay, that, that's fine, I didn't hear it myself, but if you say so, it's intake?
It's intake, yes.
Okay.
But you know, so now you've confirmed that in Cellotex, it's not contaminated?
Yes, because you were involved too.
I was involved, yes.
Yes.
But you know, the commissioner, they say it's been contaminated, so I want to know why the commissioner, so they believe it, for the last five years, it was contaminated. Why now all the ones is not contaminated no more?
Mr. Klosi, I, I can't answer that, I didn't say it.
Answer the question, sir. You know what's going on. You haven't been with Shikatano, you haven't many meetings in the last two weeks. Want me to name what you mean with that?
No, I, yes, I meant with, I had to figure that one right. I mean, they're not mind readers down there. And Vicki said about taxes, every brick we get is totally tax dollars.
I understand that.
Okay.
But what I'm saying is, in the history of this, and in the press, and it's been said, that this isn't gonna cost taxpayers any dollars. That's what I'm just bringing up. Mr. Backer, if you want, look at the minutes from February twentieth.
You don't need to read the minutes, I know I said it won't cost taxpayers any dollars, and-
Oh, you're copying over here, and I did-
I know, I know, that's what you're gonna say, now I understand.
Alright, hold on, just, just, just say your comment quick, so we can move on.
So if you go out, I'll look at it, February twentieth, meeting minutes, in there, rack P application. Councilman Ice Thir discussed getting a new rack P application started for Cellotex. That does not say extension. Says new rack P, that's why I'm asking that question.
Well, I didn't type it though.
Well?
You have not applied at all.
If it's typed up that way and put out to the public, then as a taxpayer, we have a right to ask you the question to get clarification, because if it wasn't typed up right, then that's unfortunate, but it was, listen, I was here, you guys go fast, you talk a little fast, and you just slice stuff across the table, and we're all sitting here like, what the heck just happened? That's why I'm asking for clarification.
I'm trying, yes, well, I should move a little slower, right?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm good, yeah, I'm good, you keep talking fast, I'm good.
I'll keep going. So, uh, is there any other questions, Vicki, before you move on?
No, I'm just clarifying things, because I was just told her it was an extension, and it says new. So I would like clarification on that, wasn't it an extension, was it new?
We, we didn't apply for another rack P.
Well, then your minutes are wrong.
We'll make it correct for next year. Billy, is there anything else? Any questions, sir?
I just have, well, say question statement, that I believe that we should have a work session between us and the commissioners, because, Rick, this previously, you said with the proposal for city hall, that, you know, so we're all on the same page, what's going on with us and the, and the architect. Here, I think we should do the same thing with us, at least the commissioners, because we as a council never sat down with the commissioners currently in office to say what their intentions are, what our intentions are. So, once again, Jim, like I said, you were there with Sam to generate disagreement, but no one else was. So that's why I think we should have a work session to discuss it between us and them back and forth. Now, I'm in complete favor of developing that property, I'm not in, I'm not saying that at all, I am in favor of that. But the way we're going about this, not knowing what they want to do, not knowing what we want to do, as Mr. Shikatano said on record multiple times, the property is contaminated, the prison couldn't go there, so we don't even, I mean, I know Joel has the agreement there saying that, you know, it can be used, but we don't even know what it can be used for, and we're entering this agreement to work together. And when, normally when you're partners, there's some type of equal split, which I don't think we're getting equal split, and I know we differ on that opinion, but I think we should sit down and work together on this to see what our intentions are back and forth, so the public is aware, so we know whether it's, whoever it is can ask the question, what do we want to go for Cellotex? Because, you know, as you said, or it can be used as for anything, that as long as it meets the criteria, so we should have a, a public work session to discuss this, unless you guys disagree with that, the public shouldn't know what's going on.
We never said that, I'm gonna question you earlier, and now, what would you change in the agreement?
I said multiple things, I haven't listed here, I don't agree with the sale of the property, how they get the first three million dollars, and then, then we finally split the profits to, to make up the difference in the backend, I don't agree.
Let me, let me address that one.
Oh, go right ahead.
Okay, in the past agreement, you pay a million and a half.
Exactly, and they wanted fifty percent then also, which I didn't think was right.
But the million and a half's off the table now.
That is correct, so I want to know if the million and a half is off the table, if we're fifty-fifty partners, working together to develop this. Fifty-fifty partners, you split the profits at the end, fifty-fifty, not trying to recoup your money that you lost, and then you say, okay, city is suffering, now you get what's left. Like, I don't understand, if, I, me personally, you're a businessman, you know, you don't go in business with someone unless it's a fifty-fifty split. I don't believe this is a fifty-fifty split.
Well, like, for fifty-fifty, the problem is, they have four million dollars invested in the parcel. You want us to give them two million dollars? Fifty-fifty, just like you said.
Well, that's what they wanted to do the first time around, they didn't want to ask them fifty percent in return, I just don't know why we are not sitting down with the commissioners and discussing these issues that we're discussing right now, like, we're talking amongst each other, which, which is a good thing, but we're not discussing anything with them, really, you, you, correct me if I'm wrong, you're the only person who sat down with the commissioner to generate disagreement, along with Joel's help to make everything legal.
I'm going like the way we had, you were in different meetings through the last-
The last two weeks, when this first came to light, has there been any other meetings with the council and the commissioners?
No.
So-
Was there prior meetings, so that you were involved?
Yes, I'm not disagreeing, but that was the old deal, with the million and a half, and the fifty percent, and the rack P, and we needed five hundred thousand dollars for the other half of the two million.
And it's all gone now.
It's all gone, we, we sat down for that agreement, why don't we sit down for this one, or is this one a totally different one? Or, or, or this agreement, oh, as long as, as long as we get what we, as long as they get what they want, it's okay, this is too- No, I'm not saying that, I'm saying the conversation has to take place, that everyone is on the same page. If you guys don't, excuse me, if someone does not think that the commissioners and us should sit down and have a conversation, and the public sit down and know what's going on, just say it right now, if you don't think the public should know what's going on with this agreement or this deal.
We've been working on it since fifteen years, and we worked on this a year and something on that sort of timeframe. How long do you want to go?
I'm not saying how long, but that, that was a totally different agreement, this is, this is, this is a new one.
You know what's amazing, all the times we had these other meetings, you never once said about great Republican, did you?
When was the last time, when was our official document going to be signed? There wasn't, because this took place two years ago, this whole thing, how it first took place two years ago, and it was a year ago, at the police station opening, how we stopped out, how we're going to do funding, since then, we haven't met since for anything.
You never once mentioned the public, did you?
Did you get January ninth? Mayor, can I clarify something on the, on the, the Cellotex?
Wait, wait a second, I got a question, what's January ninth?
You asked for a public work session.
Because you were gonna have this commission, it was gonna help develop the lot, when the first agreement was on the table.
Develop the lot, thank you.
And I, I'm not saying I'm against it, I just think that the public, you know, everyone should be aware, so I'm gonna make the first motion, I don't want to get denied.
Sir, can I clarify something on the Cellotex? Cellotex would pay two million dollars, no four million dollars, two million dollars, I don't know what this four million dollars comes from.
What did it cost to clean it up?
Well, clean it up, what, we didn't clean nothing up, what are you talking about? When I was there, I didn't clean nothing up.
You spent five hundred thousand dollars, and you-
No, we did, we spent, we spent the three hundred thousand dollars for the clients.
Well, what about, what about, what about the gentleman that you mean?
Where is the four million dollars coming from? You guys make a deal behind the scene? Mr. Heist, he favored the commission several times, several times, the rest two weeks, he didn't even call the council.
That I don't know about, Brian.
Oh, yeah, come on, that's what I don't, okay, wait, is that true?
Is it council?
No, I don't know.
Alright, guys, here we go, I'll make the first motion, I don't want to get denied, so I'll make the motion to table this to a later date, so we can discuss with the commissioners, us, and the public, do I have a second?
That's what I recommended.
Alright, Councilman Ice Thir, you may move on with your motion.
Okay, I made the motion to, we passed the agreement, it's laying in front of us, pass it on to the county, and they can make a decision if they want to accept it or reject it.
I'll second you.
Roches?
No.
Rightner?
Yes.
Bornheart?
Yes.
Ice Thir?
Yes.
Mr. Slaby, are you representing, are you representing the commissioners?
Yes.
Here's a copy of, uh, and I think they have it, but here's a copy of what we were just giving to see, we- I think that we can see the video, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilman Ice Thir, the CES proposal.
For the demolition down Church Street, that would probably address. Two forty-two, thank you. Make the motion to accept the, uh, some of the five hundred dollars needed here.
Second.
Thank you.
Uh, Bornheart?
Yes.
Ice Thir?
Yes.
Roches?
Yes.
Yes.
You guys been a pretty good-
Keep going, say, keep going, keep going.
Resolution twenty twenty-three, twenty-six, waiver for open container for the, uh, Derby Girls.
Second.
Ice Thir?
Yes.
Roches?
Yes.
Rightner?
Yes.
Bornheart?
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Rightner, uh, tax celebration.
We had a taxing celebration. Nine cents. Um, first and the longer, this is a, uh, history, I make a motion that we, uh, later, that, that, that everyone will know.
Second.
Roches?
Yes.
Rightner?
Yes. Yes.
Ice Thir?
Uh, vouchers and invoices, Councilman Ice Thir, right?
We have bills of sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifty-two cents in the general fund, and the liquid fuels of two hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty cents, we make a motion to accept the bills.
Second.
Rightner?
Yes.
Bornheart?
Yes.
Ice Thir?
Yes. Uh, discussion items, uh, city website. Uh, as you all know, we're going to be revamping, regenerating, wherever terminology we use, the city website, um, the folks came down, gave us a presentation, they recently did the Bloomsburg website. I know they're gonna start designing and creating here soon, I know Joel sent out an email to all departments about what they would like to see in the website pertaining to their department specifically, and an overall we'll say goal to what they want the website to show off for the city itself. Um, I know the one thing that they suggested was making the website, we'll say, more welcoming and more pleasing to the eye, not so much a governmental website with ordinances and government officials, no one wants to see our faces, they want to see the stuff that represents the city of Sumberry, so good website to check out would be Bloomsburg. So does anyone have any comments or questions about the website design as of right now?
So, when, when do you meet, I'm sorry, when, when do they do that stuff, Pat?
Um, they want to do a meeting, like as soon as possible, but I told my, I get best meetings with departments.
Okay, alright, thanks.
If you want to do updates, like, we get the website update, if we want to do updates, uh, or do we send it to them and they cut it on or anything?
No, so, there's two options, so when the, when this is taking place, they'll offer, in the price of designing it, they offer, I don't know the number, that looked in my head, X number of hours of training, and that's all included, I think they, I think in there it said, they get so many hours a month also, or we could go the route that we- Yeah, yeah, they give you this, you send you the YouTube videos, okay, you want to change this, this is how you do it. And they also, I think, there was another agreement, this is after the website's built, and we can go in with them and say, alright, they will manage the website, as you said, alright, we want to do this, and send it off to them.
Just because, just because of the, the suggestion about Susquehanna Avenue-
Yeah, those types of websites, yeah, so, there are options, there are options out there, who we want to have manage it and or keep it in house, so those options are. Questions, anyone on the website? Alright, uh, update on commercial property ordinance, Councilman Bornheart.
Uh, commercial properties, uh, they did start, how many, Jeff, how many didn't pay yet?
We have twenty-nine, twenty-nine, uh, commercials that have not paid.
Four hundred and first property that haven't, and we're-
We sent out final payment, final payment was due March fifteenth, we still have twenty-nine left.
So they're, they, they aren't gonna start, or they have started, but they're gonna get into a pretty heavy now.
And did they get them all, I'm assuming all scheduled and contacted, or they still in the process?
Yeah, yeah, because everybody, they have the con, contact, jack, uh, anything I see, when they're ready to go.
Go back.
Some, some aren't ready, so.
So just more, more so on our end, we are finishing up our paperwork, we're up, we're, we're good, it's just waiting on the inspection, so.
We're waiting on them to call and schedule it, we're up.
Alright, good, questions, anyone? Alright, uh, the mural, Mr. Backer, we kind of have the presentation, or?
Presentation, and I don't know if anybody wants to discuss the presentation, or if you have any comments on it, and what the thought we're on it.
I know Jim has some, he said he has some ideas up there at the ring, how we could use them.
I'd like to meet up with him, yeah, on the more-
Yeah, on the more detail, we-
And, and a little bit, yeah, so we have some more time to sit out, and, and try and find out what their opinion is, I really like what you're doing with the marriage to that truck, you opened that door. But I think, I got told the gentleman here earlier, that this city has more history than any, than any, uh, history or any, in the Pennsylvania, with the exception of Philadelphia.
Yeah.
And I'd like to see if they want to paint on walls or buildings, I'd like to see history painted on.
But we, like you said, we can reach out and be more detailed, what we, kind of what we can do for us, and also try to reach out to some property, and maybe have- Any other questions on the murals? Alrighty, announcements. Uh, announcements, uh, we're accepting letters of interest through the vacant three-year term on the Board of Appeals, and our, uh, please send some, uh, letters of interest to the city clerk at jbarner@sumberrypa.org. Uh, the City of Sumberry Public Safety Office is, uh, doing their neighborhood walkthrough on Monday, starting Monday, June third through Friday, June ninth. Tire and TV recycling event is June tenth, from nine AM to twelve PM at the James R. Ice Thir Community Center parking lot. The next city council meeting will be held here at city hall on May twenty-second at six fifteen, and is there any public comment at this time?
Jeff, one quick thing.
Go ahead.
What's the fee for the TV, is there a fee for the TVs?
TVs are, TVs are a dollar a pound, and we teamed up with Scott, uh- And we teamed up with Scott, uh, Scott Electronics in Bloom. And then tires are $5 apiece, and we're gonna take them and...
Dollar a pound for TVs and $5 for tires.
For tires, sir.
Question, Jeff, on the tires, is that with rim, without rim, doesn't matter?
It doesn't matter. I, I got guys with rims off.
Okay, I didn't know if they, what they were looking for about this.
It goes by length, so if the rims come in, we're gonna cut them off and give them...
Okay, all right. Public comment, please say your name, sir.
Oh, no. But one thing I'd not get mentioned about the Celltex property, that's the rail line that passes through here, crosses Tiger Street. And right now, it's, uh, probably up in here, we're minimal leaving. There's probably a good opportunity for maybe a warehouse and things like that. I would like to see somebody know what the hell we're doing with more cities, come in and take a look, and see if there's anything they can do. We have North Shore up in West Shore. We now have a gas plant in New Columbia. They took over the old, uh, New Columbia Joyce Building. Reformed the floor. We're supposed to build a second plant for a different line, all of it. We also have, the fee bill is coming in up there. They're gonna take 3,000 freight cars a year. It's probably grand because of, uh, there have been the fees. So we want to see, we can't do something with that rail spur. It's an asset, but it's just sitting there.
I agree with you.
Any other public comment at this time? Please say your name.
Julie Roches, Chair of Shade Tree Commission. I just wanted to give you an update, um, on Shade Tree, uh, but I want to do a clarification first. Um, when I reported about Kiten Gardens and the point there that is joined by Wise Markets, which intersects with South Front and South Second. So when it was initiated with Kiten Gardens, we did the walkthrough in the spring of 2022. So shortly thereafter, there was a letter initiated to Suntex. Not long after, God rest his soul, Bob passed away. So that we could not need, you know, we, we, we didn't have quorum, we needed other people, you know, so, so on and so forth. So, um, with that said, it was the, like, the end of the spring and, you know, almost the end of the class, school, you know. So I did not receive a response from Suntex until August. So that's how that kind of progressed along. And then we initiated the letter to Wise Markets about that area. So as, um, we realigned the committee, just recently, we, we realized we didn't have any kind of a format. We weren't doing collection of flags. We weren't having a moment of silence. And we were not approving any minutes. So I don't know how Bob was informing you during this term. But we wanted to do all, all that so that you guys are aware of what we're doing. That said, this past Friday, I had a meeting with Wise Markets. They are very interested in developing that area. They're going to call in a phenom burst and work with nursery and so forth to develop that area. Um, he said, you know, it will be milestones. So we'll be right away, you know how that is. And interesting enough, um, while I was in the meeting with Wise Markets, I came out to my phone and I had a follow-up from Suntex. So it's still on the board, but, you know, they have to, have it in their planning and so forth, so that's where we are with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment at this time? Please state your name, sir.
Uh, Joe Bartolo. Uh, just real quick, I just wanted to say, I think the one thing the candidate clause he doesn't understand about the Celltex property is that it's, it's not contaminated as far as industry is concerned, but it's not approved for residential use. And a prison is residential use, not if people live in it. And I think that's where his misconception is.
Joe, at that time, there was some kind of, some kind of thing that where the contamination was, was going to be a parking lot, so it was... And...
As far as I knew, the whole, the whole thing was...
No, it was already a small section. The rest of it, the rest of it, it's like a hotel. All right, there, there was, there was talks of a hotel, but they had to mediate, everything was being mediated or whatever we call it, out of that pond.
Yeah.
And that was filled with all the stuff that was there. Then the section that was flagged was, was going to be a parking lot.
Yeah, we had all that stuff from Moran that came in too.
That's not true.
It was all fracking waste that came in.
Well, I don't know, clean hardware was close up in, but, uh, I know that's not true about the Marines.
And in, in, in one of the studies they investigated, all different claims of different waste and everything, and they dug, and they looked for barrels, and they looked for asbestos, and they looked for all these different things. And a lot of those claims that they...
But Mr. Buck said they already put six feet in there.
No, no. But you don't, and I was part of that. What's done, what that was done for is Moran was originally want to start trying to develop that. Then, if you stand on the ground, you're looking out, you see an eight-foot scum wall. He was raising that up, whatever was going to be there, a hotel, whatever, you could look over that site and see the road. That's what the purpose of that. And Mike, Mike, how much time, we, we were out with Northumberland County? I can't think of the gentleman's name. Like, the meetings that we were at, and it was decided, as long as Mr. Moran did that less than an acre at a time, he had need no other special permits other than what was already granted to him.
That's right, he was, he was approved through, he was approved through the Northumberland County Constellation District. It's all within our nature.
I've been saying that it's not approved for residential, that's why.
Well, I, I, I heard, I, I didn't hear the, I didn't hear the, the thing, but that was supposedly, that statement was supposedly made at the debate. And also, the other thing that, that was important is, is they were going to build that in Summery until they decided they wanted to put a women's wing on that prison, which had created a problem of building that wing, and then they went, and then it was done on purpose or not, I don't know.
Plus they had the ashtray to do it.
But then, it's when they looked for more room, because they would have had to architect and change everything around.
As soon as we...
Any other public comment at this time?
So I'll just say that, that I have it on film. I'm giving a report of progress over at City Bridge. So I will say that I have it on film as well, of the commissioner talking about the whole contamination of putting that cap on there and that, that if you put a hotel, you're gonna have, the suggestion would be to put a parking garage and then build that hotel above it, because it can't be residential. So I have it on film. So what I'm gonna suggest to you is you go back to Mr. Schikatano and have that conversation, because he's the one saying it. I have it saying it.
And, and Mr. Schikatano, I'll say this, was, was not part of the original healing of the Celltex.
That Mr. Schikatano should probably educate himself and not be making this public comment. How it remains on film.
And Miss Best.
Well, Miss Best flip-flopped on that too. So I, I, I did my reading, so I could stay here all night and educate the public, but I'd like to move on. So, while we're, I'm talking to you, Rick, when I came in here tonight and you were talking about the murals, I heard you, just as you said now, which was, um, that we have a rich history in the city and that's great, and you want to see that. You made reference to the mural that's on Forest Street. And I just want to explain something to you. What art is to Pedro Reyes might not be what art is to you. So I'm gonna suggest you be careful about making comments about, well, I don't know what the heck that is, and it's, you know, I thought it was rail, and now it's just boats or whatever. So, you know what? Would you rather just look at a building with chicken paint on the side of it or portioning?
I don't know, I, I'm not impressed with that, okay? I wasn't impressed with it.
But that's your perception, that's not his perception of the rest of us that need money.
Just like you are.
Well, I'm just suggesting is to be careful, because I heard that comment, you know, it, it's just rude. What, what is art to you might not be as, as different as other people, that's all I'm saying. So heaven forbid we have somebody that tried to make Summery look better, but it wasn't your qualification, so we're just gonna nix it and be disrespectful. Okay, moving on. Um, Mr. Barnhart, emergency plan. Did, um, was there any public meeting about the emergency plan? And you were saying about you wanted people to be on that, the emergency thing, did that happen?
It wasn't a public meeting, it was just for the fire department, the flood. The mayor was there, the police were there. Uh, County was there, I mean, it was, everybody that was going to be involved was there to start it. Right now, Paul Brown is getting information, who, who is the EMA? So he, and we're getting information to him, and he's putting some together, and then we're gonna meet with everybody individually till we get everything straightened out, and we're all gonna meet together.
So we only have one EMA director, you say?
Uh, as of right now.
Right now, is there still the assistant?
Uh, we're working on a system that's qualified, that can do it.
Qualified and good, okay. The last time I was told that that was his choice, what he wanted to do. But, you know what, as a citizen, I would encourage you to find an assistant, because if Paul Brown calls over tomorrow, that assistant will step up and do what they need to do.
I agree 100%.
Thank you. All right, so Light Fest, all these road closures. When Light Fest came in and we did an update, it was being asked of me to change my Santa parade route. So now I'm gonna ask that my Santa parade route not be changed, because we have all these other closures here, the Halloween parade still come in the same route. I'm not sure why the Santa parade has to be changed. Doesn't make much sense.
I can understand, I didn't even know what that was.
I'll put in a road closure for that, thank you. Um, just seeing a rotary flag, it'll be going in, the 24th down at the river, I already followed up with Jolins, and it'll be up after the June 3rd event. It's gonna be a little stretch there by the, by the water fountain, so it's not gonna interfere with any of the vendors or anything. It's great.
Wait, where are they? Oh, oh, okay. Oh, okay, okay. It's a guy who's...
Yeah, we moved it, it was before, it was down here, and we moved it back to the original.
Gotcha, gotcha, thank you for that.
Also because of the lighting. But, um, it's a great opportunity for the citizens to look at the medallions, and we are, um, I did put in for the use of the mural park for Memorial Day. Um, what we'd like to do is a flag ceremony. We haven't been able to do it, but we're gonna bump it to 11 AM from the understanding where is the parade cap on that way. So, um, you know, we have a task player, and, you know, Sarah Walker's gonna be there. I need to get to see if you can be there, yeah, but, um, and ROTC. So we're working on that, I did put in for the use of that, so just to let the public know that will happen. And, okay, so we're a little early, but Good Will's Host Company, I just want to let you know, tomorrow we're getting our mulch in, we're gonna get that spread and get our playground open for the community. Um, the other thing I just want to thank, code office, we've had, we're having an issue up there with the abandoned cars on our property. Um, and Jeff and Todd were, I mean, we were able to work with the young lady, not have to cost her any money to get it towed. But we are gonna be moving forward. I followed up with Steve Walker and Todd. Um, we are gonna, I'm gonna do a one call, and we are gonna be petitioning around our playground, because what's happening is they're blocking our gate, we can't get our mowing equipment in, because they're parking like inches from our fence. And we can't get our grass moved correctly around the playground. And then Jeff's gonna be calling, because the cars are there. I mean, the one car, the grass is literally growing up into the engine, we can't have that. Um, especially the fact that we're working on, you know, creating a different space in that playground. So just to let you know, so if you start getting calls about, I went to the other day, there was 15 cars parked around our playground. And they're just leaving, they're changing their oil on our grass and doing all those things. So we're gonna have some upset people, but our members want it taken care of, and so do we. Okay, um, oh, the last thing is Good Will's Host Company and United Way, United and Recovery have worked together. Um, they're putting in Narcan boxes in the community for, um, accessible Narcan for people that overdosing. Um, so Good Will's Host Company, we're going to be putting one of those on our property so that people can access that Narcan in the event of a overdose or something like that. So if there's any questions about that, just direct it to me. Once it's out or any comment, and you can educate them on it. We're not encouraging people to do drugs, we're encouraging people to live, don't do not overdoses. Um, John, the fire companies, do they still, do they still have to pay for the inspection? Is that...
They're all paid up, all the way.
Okay, I just wasn't sure where, because I know it was brought up at a meeting, but I wasn't sure.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I got one thing for you. On Memorial Day, we have the parade. Did you ever think of reaching out to the VFW, the Legion, or any other organization to, to lay a wreath and say prayer for the...
Yeah, I sort of, yeah, this was all of a sudden, like, Rotary went, hey, we, we should do this. And I'm like, oh, great, yeah, we're looking for that together in a couple days. So, yeah, so I'm trying to get all the, so what I'm hoping is they can go from there to here, you know, sort of make it a continuum through the city. So we'll, we'll go that, hopefully.
Now, you're involved at the Legion, right? And, right, what, what?
Not till, not till Wednesday.
Uh, well, maybe like I said, you mean the veteran at all, like, you can team up with Victoria and help create something to get it going. Something, something like, you know, help them all get rolling. Any other public comment? Go ahead, say your name, sir.
I'm just here, um, the playgrounds are, a lot of them are beat up pretty bad. Uh, trying to do something I can to help the city of Summery. Um, so I'm just gonna give out to you guys, give you free level nets for every basketball hoop in town. So a lot of hoops have no nets, nothing on it at all, um, kind of beat up. So these will last a long time. There's 10 here, 10 basketball hoops or five ports. So, that's it.
Thanks, Jeff. Appreciate it, Jeff. Any other public comment? Say your name, sir.
Bill Brown.
Are we actually gonna get Big Wolf for it?
Yeah. Mr. Walker is here to see us, and I know the pain is ordered. Jim Duncan talked to us two weeks ago, it was. It's gonna be in the P playground. And Bill, you're the first guy to...
I don't know anything about it, we need a lighter.
How less accessible is the playground? Something we're looking at for right now, we'd be locked up to vandalism. Bill volunteered that they can be the P man to open up some...
Any other public comment?
That's pretty old, Jim.
Any other public comment at this time?
Mayor, real quick, uh, Jim, I'm looking to talk to Lisa or Steve. An intersection that Chestnut and Tannen. I have some complaints, and saw somebody having a hard time getting around those two telephone poles that are in the middle of the sidewalk.
I'll call people now, it was what we done last year.
Yeah, you can't even get through there. Anybody with a wheelchair is not getting, not called people, we get a grip.
The sad part is the guy that put the pole there in the middle of the sidewalk, who would do that?
I don't know, you can't, I'm just, I told the person, it's very... Thank you.
Any other public comment at this time? All right, I adjourn this meeting.